Good evening, and good evening everyone, and welcome to the August 25, 2020 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable channel charters, Channel 6 and the Spectrum, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on your screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. Okay, Mr. Agamian?
We'll call Councilmember Brock.
Yeah.
Here.
Can't hear anyone.
No.
Yeah.
Councilmember Divine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. What's next, Mr. Agamian?
Next would be flag salute.
Okay. Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Tonight, we give thanks for the freedoms we enjoy in the great country. Let us not take them for granted, but use our lives and resources according to your will. Keep us reminded that we are all traveling the same road towards the same destination. Help us to respect each other as we go. Finally, we pray for the council that the city may prosper under their leadership. Guide them in their decisions that they may be in the best interest of the city and its citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Agamian. What's next, please?
Next would be the agenda for the August 25, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 20, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next would be three presentation and appointments. Three A would be agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, September 1, 2020, which will be read by Deputy City Manager John Tukthalian.
Mr. John Tukthalian, please.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council. Next week's meetings will begin in the afternoon at 3 o'clock. The Glendale Housing Authority only has adoption of the minutes or approval of minutes. There will be, however, a special meeting of the Glendale City Council with one item from the Community Development Department, and that's a report seeking direction to implement a pilot bike-share program. In the evening, we will have a number of consent items. At 4B will be a report from the City Clerk regarding the award of a contract for legal advertising within the city of Glendale, followed by two reports from the Police Department. The first report is a report to accept grant funds to conduct additional distracted driving, vehicle code, bicycle, pedestrian, and driving under the influence violations. The second report from the Police Department will be to accept grant funding in the amount of $250,000 to be used to hire two new police officers for the purposes of increasing community policing and crime prevention efforts. Moving on to the action items, there are two. The first will be a report from Management Services regarding the establishment of a Sustainability Commission, followed by one more report from the Police Department regarding TASER replacements. That concludes next week's report.
Thank you very much. What's next, please?
Next would be three. Be appointment of Board and Commission Member Jane Patel, Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission.
And Mr. Brockman.
Good evening. Yes, I nominated Jane Patel for the Parks Commission last week. I spoke about her and talked about her qualifications, so I won't repeat that. But I see that Jane is on WebEx here, and I think she wants to make a very brief statement.
Hi. I want to thank Councilmember Dan Brockman and the rest of Glendale City Council for the appointment. This community is near and dear to me, and I'm thrilled to be of service on the Parks Commission. Given the current health and economic crisis, there's never been a more important time to develop local support services and continue the development of our city's green space. Thank you again, and I look forward to being a part of this commission.
Thank you. What's next, please? Oh, we have to...
We need to vote.
Yeah. Yes, we have to roll call, please, I guess, for...
Councilmember Brockman?
Yes.
Divine? Divine?
She said yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Next would be appointment of Board and Commission Member Karo Minas, Design Review Board. I do have... I do have a caller regarding this individual.
Okay, let's go to call.
Victoria, you're live, Victoria?
I'm here.
Victoria, you're live, Victoria?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, we're listening.
Okay, I am calling about Mayor Agajanian's Karo Minasian. I think, would it be possible to stop that nomination?
On what?
I recommend Susan Wolfson. Susan Wolfson, former candidate for City Council. Mr. Minasian is a good neighbor. Why pull him out of retirement? Why same old, same old? A favor for a favor? There would be too much conflict on interest, as these DRBs and developers were involved in mutual projects for years. Don't anyone know anybody else outside the pool? Wolfson is sincere in Glendale quality of life.
Wolfson, I have...
Would it be possible to... Years back, Mr. Minasian's family was injured in the same block that I live, and Paul died because of each and every City Council member's neglect, including Kasakian and Garcia neglect to make a change on the road. Then I have... I need to tell you about a house that was built not far from here. That house had a mature oak tree. The builder, the architect, we all know who he was, has left that tree, a stump, inside a little bit of dirt, so it can be falling over right away, and it did. This was criminal, I think. There was no approve... No plans for to find the connection to the public utilities. They had excavated Chevy Chase in five different locations, six feet deep until they could find the connections. Doesn't the architect have the plans exactly where the line should be going? And this excav... This tree, leave the stump of the tree, hundreds, over hundreds of mature trees, leave it sitting there without its legs.
Thank you.
It's like a stick on a wet sand in a beach that's gonna fall right over. I sent to Mr. Garcia that notice. I hope he informs the City Council. I hope someone is looking into that.
All right, thank you. You can call on the comment or announcement section and raise your concerns. Thank you very much for the calling.
Thank you.
However, Ms. Wolfson, I appointed on another commission. Has nothing to do with this. However, Mr. Karo Minas is an engineer who lived in Glendale since 1975, and his business is in Glendale since that time. He worked in residence of Glendale for a long time, and is the person who I'm trying to appoint for the Board of Design Review Board. So may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brockman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Next would be consent items, including minutes, that follow our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
I'd like to move... I'd like to pull 4C, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, 4C is pulled. Okay, for the balance of the items, I have a roll call, please.
I'll move the balance.
And I will second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brockman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Item 4C, please.
4C would be Glendale Water and Power regarding Amendment Number Four to Transmission Services Agreement 10929, Transmission of Hoover Power. C1 would be motion authorizing the City Manager to execute Amendment Number Four, extending Transmission Services Agreement Number 10929 between the cities of Glendale and Los Angeles to provide continued transmission of Hoover power for the city of Glendale.
Yes, Mr. Najarian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like Mr. Young to tell us in a nutshell what we're doing, and then I have a comment after that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is Mark Young, Deputy General Manager, Power Management. We're requesting the Fourth Amendment of this contract that will allow us to transmit Hoover energy to the city of Glendale. We were involved in the original contract of Hoover in 1931, and this corresponds to that contract for energy. It's 33 megawatts, first time through 33,178 kilowatt.
Mr. Young? Mr. Young?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Mr. Young? Let me understand this. 4C? Mr. Najarian, did you say 4C?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is the item that I intended to be pulled.
Yeah, but that is for the Glendale... Are you concerning with Glendale Water and Power Amendment Number Four?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, I know.
But then it's not 4C, then it's 4D, right?
No, it's 4C, sir.
No, 4D.
It's 4C, Mayor.
4C is not Glendale Water and Power. To me, 4C is something else, unless... Wait a minute.
Someone's playing a prank on you, Mayor.
Okay, let me see.
It must have given the wrong agenda.
What I have 4C is... Here is 4C is something else, so it's wrong then. Yeah, 4D is correct, right?
We have a 4D. There is no 4D.
Okay, so what I had was not correct. So 4C is correct, so please continue. On mine was different. Mine was 4D, however. Okay, let's continue.
Yes, sir. So this is a Fourth Amendment to attempting to get Hoover Transmission extended. This Hoover Transmission corresponds to the original Hoover deal that was extended, or that was, yes, sir, extended in 2017 for 50 years. We've been attempting to work with Los Angeles and Burbank to get another 50-year deal for this transmission, and we need one more year. It's becoming more difficult than we thought it would, and we were looking for an extension using the old terms of the contract.
So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young, and, Mr. Mayor. My point is that we have this great resource, energy resource, although we can't call it renewable, certainly call it non-carbon, and we've had that since its inception, which was very great, great foresight on the part of our city. But we still have issues in transmitting that power to the city of Glendale. We have some of the more obvious issues in other areas, such as forced cutouts of those power lines due to fire issues, potential fire issues. We've got actual fire issues which can damage the lines. But this is a negotiated political/legal issue that we have to deal with, with the city of Los Angeles, to bring in our non-carbon power into the city. So it's never an easy... It's never an easy thing to transmit the power to the city of Glendale. And that's my point, is that we're only going one more year on the extension while we enter into these, as Mr. Young said, difficult negotiations with the city of Los Angeles. And to some extent, we're really at their mercy because the power lines are owned by them, and we're trying to work a deal with them to get our renewable... Can't call it renewable, our non-carbon power into the city.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Divine?
Yeah, and my question to staff during the briefing was, can we expand transmission with an amendment like this? And unfortunately, the answer is no. I guess we're lucky that we get one-year extension. So LA is being very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And since we're on this subject...
Yes, Mr. Brockman?
Yeah, because I raised a number of questions about the negotiations. I understand that, you know, it's confidential, so I believe we're going to discuss this in closed session at some point soon, and I would like to. But there are, you know, a number of things that are out there that create greater flexibility with the transmission we have. There's something called the EIM, or the Energy and Balance Market. There's something called NITS, which is Network Integration Services, I believe. And all of these things, we should participate in. There are things LA is doing, and they will give us additional flexibility in the power that we bring into Glendale. And there are other expansions that LA is working on, and we really do need to make sure that we are at the table and we get the bite of those apples as they become available. So I am very interested in this negotiation, but I understand that we cannot discuss it in an open session.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a...
I'll move the item at 4C.
Second?
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brockman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Now, I would like to invite my colleagues to share any comments that they had.
City Council and staff... City Council and staff comments?
First, City Council comments. Is there any comment? Or I go to staff?
I have a number of items. If you would like to take me first?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Brock.
Okay. Yeah, I have four things. One, and if Mr. Agamian could put up a slide that I gave him... Can you put that up?
Yes.
I wanted to let people know about this. So I went out and I got an electric lawnmower, and it's great. It works just perfectly. It's battery-operated. And I'm taking advantage of this program that's offered by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. And basically, it gives up to $250 back if you turn in your old gas mower. So, number one, I would like people to know about this. And I would also like to mention why I think it's important. I think we've had this discussion a little bit when we talked about leaf blowers, but many people don't know that gas mowers are extremely polluting. They... One hour, running a gas motor for one hour is equivalent to driving a car, a typical car, for 350 miles. And this is from the EPA. This isn't from an environmental organization like Sierra Club. It's from the EPA. And if you think about that 350 miles, it's not like driving on the freeway. It's like you're driving around your own house, 350 miles, because that pollution is very local. Another thing I learned is that landscape equipment is equal to 5% of the US air pollution, which is pretty incredible, and even more so in urban areas. So our air quality is bad. We know we've seen lately, the air quality indexes have been not good, unhealthy air. And so anything we can do to take some of these gas mowers off of our lawns would be really good in helping clear the air. So I wanted to mention that. And since I'm on that subject, I did want to see if Mr. Bolinikin can just give us a quick update of where we are with the pilot, the electric leaf blower pilot that I know Councilmember Divine asked for this some time ago, and we're going to be piloting the use of these electric leaf blowers in certain parks. And I just thought if you could give a very quick update on where we are, that would be great.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of the council. Our pilot program started August 4. So we have eight locations in Glendale that are considered green zones: Verdugo Adobe, the City Hall Complex, Casa Adobe de San Rafael, Maryland Avenue Park, Heritage Garden, Wilson Many, Doran Many, and Harvard Many. We basically had our staff be trained by American Green Zone Alliance on the use of electric lawnmowers, electric edgers, and electric...
Blowers?
Blowers. Electric blowers, I'm sorry. Electric blowers. They are in use. If you see any of the Parkwood Maintenance Landscape Staff around City Hall wearing a small backpack and, you know, using the blower, those are the units that we have purchased. Basically, with the units that we have purchased, we eliminated 18 pieces of gas-powered equipment out of our fleet. We turned those in and purchased the electric equipment. So far, so good. Hopefully, we'll, depending on how well it goes, you know, we'll come to council and see if we can expand to other locations.
Thank you. Thank you, that's great. And my next one is also something that Mr. Bolinikin can comment on. Given, you know, we've just experienced a week of very intense heat, and I know we opened these cooling centers, and I was interested in hearing how that's going. Difficult with COVID, but I know you made sure that you set up the right protocols. And are those being heavily used? And what are you seeing?
So far, we have had 74 participants total of the last five days. We open up our cooling centers when the temperatures reach 95 degrees or above, or when LA County activates their cooling centers. All of our community centers are part of the LA County list, but we coordinate with LA County depending on what type of programming we have. So the next few days, we will have Griffith Manor open as a cooling center starting Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, since it looks like it's going to be 95 degrees and above. We do practice our, you know, safety protocols with COVID-19. We provide all of our participants with bottled water, air conditioning, and basically provide them with TV and a few movies that we put on so they can enjoy the cool air conditioning facility.
Okay, thank you for that. And, you know, I think we know that our world is getting hotter, and in particular, I think our areas in South Glendale are more dense urban areas where we tend to have more of our immigrant population, more of our minority population, lower incomes in general. Those areas tend to be even hotter because they have, you know, less green space. And so it's a concern. It's something I'll probably bring at another council meeting. I'll raise this issue. But I do think it's really important for us to be thinking of how we start dealing with this long-term heat island effect that is just going to get worse. But I'll set that aside for now and just thank the Parks Department for doing that with the cooling centers.
Thank you. Is there any...
I have two other items.
Oh, okay.
The third one is, I'm concerned about... This is a property in the Rossmoyn Historic District. It's 1254 Ethel. And it's a contributor to the Historic District. I've spoken to the head of the Homeowners Association there. The owners of this particular property have torn out the original windows with no permit. The HOA has raised this issue numerous times, but apparently, no stop-work order has been placed. And they've been told that the homeowner will be placed on a violators list. But as I'm told, it could take years to get resolution. In the meantime, they're out there, you know, every day with no permits. There are no permits on the property portal, and there's been no update on the portal since 2013. So it's a very concerning situation to the people there, and they don't feel like they're getting a response. So I wanted to ask if Mr. Lanza Faim is there, you know, or Mr. Platt, you know, what are we doing in this particular situation? And in general, how are we dealing with these situations? Because I know, you know, we get pretty aggressive sometimes on things that may be considered small. Like, remember, we talked a lot about Mr. Strauss in the mailbox on Parkway? And yet, when we see something like this, it doesn't seem like we're cracking down. I mean, they're still every day doing work on the property, and I don't know what it takes for us to just stop them in their tracks until they get complacent.
Well, I would correct. There is a stop-work order on the project. We have been on site. We have photographed everything that's there. We have been in touch with the owner. They, in fact, started the application process to legalize the windows and get that work done. Now, that has been some period of time, and I asked Code Enforcement to go out and check again. I don't believe that we, and as I checked with Code Enforcement earlier, they have not heard from anybody. So please, if there is work that's taking place out there, call us immediately, and we'll schedule somebody to get out there that day.
But on our regular... Yeah, I'm told every day there's work going on there. So I think it would just be a good idea to go... Don't wait for somebody to call to go out there and check it.
And I have somebody checking it tomorrow. They're scheduled to go out tomorrow.
Okay. But what do we... How do we... You know, do we let them do other work? Do we let them apply for permits if they've just ripped out windows, apparently on a Saturday in a historic district without any permits? I mean, what do we do? What do we do to ensure that people don't do this? We passed this anti-demolition ordinance last year, right? I mean, this probably isn't to that level, but, you know, it seems like it's a frustrating situation.
Well, we want them to legalize the windows, so indeed, we want them to come in and pull a permit for it. There is penalties in terms of double fees, and then they've got to put in an approved window that meets the... What's the word I'm looking for? Keeps the character of the district. So Mr. Platt has been in touch with... So Mr. Platt has been in touch with the owner. They've discussed windows, what would work, be, what would be acceptable. And then we do want them to come in and get those permitted to legalize the project.
Okay, well, I hope we can, we can take a harder line on, on this one. Anyway, my, my last one, I just wanted to see if we could add, so we have an agenda item coming up for solar panels on commercial rooftops. And I wanted to see if we could add to that a discussion of Glendale Water and Power's feed-in tariff program, and how, how it compares to some of the other cities. I know, for instance, Los Angeles has implemented just about three months ago a feed-in tariff program. And for people that don't know, with solar, there are two ways that you, there are kind of two sets of economics. One is called net energy metering, which is what most of us use. And, and that's simply, we get credit when we send power from our rooftop into the grid, and then we use those credits when we take power back from the utility. But feed-in tariff is more for commercial entities that have large rooftops that don't need all the power, but it's to create incentives for them to actually build out that solar. And LA is looking to do 100 megawatts over five years. It's very important that we start pushing solar on, on commercial properties. And that feed-in tariff is, is a key element of the economics to make that viable for customers to go ahead and do. So I may need a second on that one, but I would like to see a report on that come back when we talk about.
I'll second it.
Thanks.
If it needs a second, I'll second it.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other comment by my council members, or I go to next item? Okay. Now, staff comments, and I would like to ask Assistant Fire Chief, I guess, right? Is it Mr. Lynch or Mr. Rubik?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. If you allow me, I'd like to invite Deputy Chief Lynch.
Deputy Chief, I'm sorry.
That's okay. To, to provide an update on the status of the wildfires that are raging across California. And as you know, our fire department is part of the statewide mutual aid probe system. And as such, we have deployed firefighters as well as apparatus to help battle these fires. And as was reported to you, our chief Lanzus is up there in Northern California that was asked to go up there and help with, with this effort. So with that, Chief Lynch.
Deputy Fire Chief Lynch, so I make it.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thank you. Just like Mr. Galanian said, unprecedented times here throughout the state with the fire situation. Next slide, please. I provided a, a map here showing some of the significant fires that are occurring. And this, this, to, to date, we've had over 7,000 fires in the state. And you'll see from, as we go through these slides, that we are in unprecedented times, and, and we have a number of people throughout the state. So with that being said, I guess, next slide, please. There we go.
Can we go back? I'm very sorry. What's the closest to us, let's say to Glendale?
The closest fire to us that's still active is that Lake Fire, Castake Lake, down there. You'll see in the, the south end of the picture. We actually deployed a dispatcher there today through mutual aid request as one of our, so one of our 27 personnel that are out. So that's closest fire. We had some folks that were at that Lake Fire, and they've since been redeployed throughout the state to other fires.
How about in Riverside?
Riverside, we did have some folks, there was a fire, the, I believe, the Apple Fire that was going on.
Yeah.
And we had a number of folks there. Some of them have, again, they've either returned and/or been deployed in other areas throughout the state. So been extremely, extremely busy year.
So those are the two fires on the map, which are the, the lower, I mean, the low, I mean, on the south side of California, right?
Southern California, yeah. Yeah, there are some other small fires burning that didn't necessarily make the map, but these are the ones that just put the, the significant, you know, they're all significant, but these are, are large fires that are ongoing and causing, causing concern.
Thank you.
Moving on, at this point in the year, we're at 1.4 million acres have burned to date in 2020. And last year, on this date, we're at 56,000 acres. So as you can see, this last week has been extremely, extremely damaging to, to the, to the state with 1.2 million acres burned in the past week. And that's where all these resources or the, the requests have been extremely high demand. Multiple states moving in to assist as well. Fire Chief Lanzus was, is, as Mr. Galanian said, deployed out to the, the Santa Cruz Lightning, or, I'm sorry, Santa Clara Lightning Complex. That's now the second largest fire in the history of the state of California. Chief Lanzus is, has a, operates a position as an operations section chief, type one, the highest level. So he is, was, was requested, and he is up there along with a, a number of other resources throughout the state trying to contain these fires. And I spoke to him earlier today, and he says it's challenging dealing with, you know, limited resources. His piece of the ground that he's covering is over 150,000 acres that he's managing. So along with that, you know, like, like I previously spoke of, 27 Glendale fire personnel are deployed. Included in that, in that complement of 27 is, is three engine companies, one water tender, and 14 various single resource positions. In, in those single resource positions, we have fireline paramedics, fireline EMTs, medical unit leaders, different specialties that our folks are, have specialized in. Along those lines, those 27 people are on eight different fires in Northern California and Southern California. And I, I really got to hand it to our firefighters, they've been stepping up to ensure we are staffed. When, when our folks go away, those, those positions are open. Here, they need to be filled, and our folks have been stepping up and doing a great job. I want to, I want to ensure to you all that we are fully staffed and ready to handle any emergency that comes our way despite these fires going on throughout the state. We did have a couple of small spot fires at the 134 and the 2, just south of the, in, into the LA city area that we assisted them on this afternoon. And we, we are, we are prepared, continue to be prepared.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, Ms. Divine.
Deputy Chief Lynch. And we should remind everyone, I think, that the city is reimbursed for all of the personnel that we have deployed, correct?
Yes, ma'am. The, the disasters have been declared, the proclamations have been made. We, we do get reimbursed for all of these, these personnel that, that go out. This is not, there's, of no cost to the city when our, when our, when our folks go out and work on these incidents. And we would, we would expect the same, should we have a significant incident here, we would get that same assistance from them, which is, which is important to note. In, in past years, we've had significant fires, Bram Park area, San Rafael's, where we've requested those like resources, and, and they're at the ready, and they come to assist us as well. So it, it is a, again, a mutual aid system like we discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no further questions regarding the wildfires, I'd like for Deputy Chief Lynch to provide an update on the latest COVID-19 numbers.
Okay. Deputy Chief Lynch.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I've prepared a short report to discuss the COVID-19 numbers. And I'll start with the, and I think there is a little bit of, there's, there's a little, little, some positivity here in these numbers. We're seeing, seeing a shade of positivity. Again, the 5,715,567 cases in the United States. California, total cases, 668,615, with 40,584 cases in the last seven days. Next slide, please. In LA County, cases, new cases, 1,198, total cases, 232,893. And you'll see the deaths at 13. In Glendale, 2,943 cases and 14 new cases, and zero deaths to report, which, which again is, is good news. Moving on to, to the next slide, like I said, there are some positive signs, there's some key indicators here, and reported from LA County that I was reading today. And the daily hospitalizations are down 45% from what we were seeing in July. Put that in perspective, the, the deaths in LA County down from an average of 44 per day to 28 per day. And so these, I, I'm happy to report some fairly positive information and moving in the right direction. We continue, we continue to utilize obviously our masks, hand sanitizer, social distancing, hand washing, all those precautions that, that we can possibly do to continue to, to keep that number moving downward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Deputy Chief Lynch. Is there any question for, from Deputy Chief Lynch?
No, but Mayor, if I may, it's Mrs. Divine again.
Yes, please, Ms. Divine.
If there's anyone here from the police department, I'd like to have a brief statement on how the task force is doing on enforcing the face coverings.
Okay. Chief, Chief Pobolitis is here, he's coming forward.
Wonderful, wonderful. How many, if we've given any citations, and how many stops have we made? And, you know, maybe that has something to do with our good numbers, I'm hopeful. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Divine, members of council, Carl Pobolitis, Police Chief. Yes, we have had a task force out for, I guess now it's about a week and a half. We're a little over 507, what we call observations or discussions with folks. As I said, the vast majority of people do, are in compliance with the, with the mask ordinance. There have been a few egregious violations that they have found as of later this afternoon. We've issued approximately 25 citations to, to, to those folks. And as I said, there, there are a couple of other incidents that I know I, I let a few people know about, where we had some incidents involving businesses where people had not, were not wearing masks, and it involved some assaults on either other customers and so forth. And we had one where our officer saw somebody not wearing masks, and that investigation resulted to arrest a people for sales of narcotics, possession of a firearm, and a couple of other, other violations. So those obviously weren't cited, they were arrested for, for the, the other, the other violations.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, Ms. Ajima.
Next would be community, community event announcements, three minutes. I do have three callers on the line.
Okay. So now we'll take calls, so please limit yourself in, within three minutes to share your comments. Thank you.
Tony, you're live, Tony?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Tony.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmember staff, Tony Passarella.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Well, you know, a couple of things that just come up here, cooling stations. So you're going to pack probably mostly seniors in the rooms, regardless of the social distancing and the mask. You're going to do that, but you're not going to open the playgrounds for the kids when the kids are out in the fresh air. So what's up with that, okay? Arm's going to put up a couple of photos, so when they come up, I'll talk over those. Wearing a mask. By the way, I was passing Verdugo Woodlands, and there you go. You see, this, this is symbolic of pointing a gun at somebody's head. That temperature thermometer thing is a laser pointing it at the head of the child. What do you think these kids are going to do when they're playing out in the neighborhood or whatever, and they have a water pistol or, or a plastic revolver? They're going to point it at somebody's head. So this is what we're teaching the children here. By the way, that temperature thing does not work. It, it skin surface only, it's inaccurate, it's inconsistent, and some people can have COVID and, and not even have a temperature. So this whole thing is a charade, it's a farce. And, and, and the kids have to wear masks. I was noticing coming out of the same school, the kids had masks on. So let me talk about masks for a minute. There's CO2 poisoning related, breathing their own bacteria, their own carbon dioxide, and these kids, by the way, they're only police and fire personnel allowed to go into the school. The rest got to do the distance learning. So that's discrimination, as far as I'm concerned. So the mask wearing weakens organs, weakens immunity. Check this stuff out, people, I do my research. You need to, you need to do your research. Lowers oxygen levels, dentists are finding that inflammation in the gums are appearing in the mouth, a face mask syndrome, this is what dermatologists are finding, people are coming in, that there's bacteria infections around the mouth and on the face. So what, what's happening here is we're doing irreparable psychological damage to these kids. They're, they're socially disconnected, they're afraid of people. 6.3 million children or young people under the age of 17 were diagnosed in California with depression and anxiety in the last seven months. So what is going on here? Next slide, please, Arm. Okay, the California death rate is virtually the same as it was last year at this time. There's 15 more deaths from all causes this time last year, 15 more. So it's virtually the same. There's no pandemic, people. It never was a pandemic, there's no pandemic now. Now we got this sign here, this was a complete failure. I've seen this only on one property. It also had a Biden sign on the corner of Mountain and Greenbrier. Don't be a T U R D, protect the herd, wear your mask. This is vulgar slang, right? And before I, I suggested that I hope this wasn't targeted to the children, but after looking at it, obviously it is targeted to the children. What's going on? There's a little bunny rabbit with a gun shooting the, the laser out and the little chipmunk, whatever that was sanitized. If you use too much hand sanitizer, it's not good either, all right? And the mask, we just talked about the mask, all right? So, so let's talk about Chief Pobolitis talking about 25 mask citations. Well, how come the police look the other way at Maple Park, Fremont Park, when they can hand out 25 stations and citations in 30 minutes there? What about that?
Mr. Passarella.
But yet close the playgrounds for the children, right?
Mr. Passarella.
What?
You, you passed the three minutes limit. It's already we are in.
Listen, you haven't heard the last of me, you know my record. I'm going to be relentless, I'm coming at you every single week. You need to take down those mesh things at these playgrounds. You need to burn these signs, these lawn signs, and you need to get rid of that fine order. That's another thing, you're putting pressure on people. You're not, you're not quite the elected leader. You ought to be like the South Dakota Governor, Kristi Moe, who never closed down.
Mary.
And how about John MacArthur, the great community pastor?
Mr. Passarella, you can't.
I recommend you, you have to just cut him off.
I was there two Sundays ago with no mask. I don't wear a mask in this city.
Mr. Passarella, you're talking for over five minutes. And I let you to do it, but please call back next week.
No, I'll call back, you can bet I'll call back next week and the following week and the following week.
That's fine, but now you passed the three mil, three minutes limit. Please, thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
David, David, you're live?
Hey, good evening, council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is David Cannon. I'm of Republic Service, I'm the general manager in Sun Valley. Just calling in to ask the council if they could please nudge Mr. Garcia a week's Just calling in to ask the council if they could please nudge Mr. Garcia, we've sent in a information request regarding the commercial franchise contract. We've sent in two letters so far and have yet received anything back. And we're hoping that the council can urge the city attorney to provide us the information as requested and all the information as requested. I did find it interesting, Mr. Brockman brought up that electric lawnmowers, I would like to announce that Republic just released a purchase order for twenty-five hundred electric waste collection vehicles. And so we're just at odds trying to understand how we weren't considered in the top four. So we're, we're looking forward to the information request so we can determine and get some clarification of why we weren't considered. I won't take up your time and you gotta get back about two more minutes, so I appreciate your understanding and look forward for the information. Have a great night.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Teresa, you're live, Teresa?
Good evening, thank you for taking my call. My name is Teresa Romo and I am currently a patient at Glendale Post-Acute Skilled Nursing Facility. And I apologize for your previous caller, I am a COVID survivor. And we have many patients in the facility who are COVID patients. And many of them are without means of communicating with their families. We can't leave and no one can come in. And I'm wondering if there are any programs through the city that could possibly donate some tablets to the facility so that people can communicate with their families? Most people are confined to their rooms and the only contact they have is with nurses and CNA. And there's a lot of patients that still have their minds and it would be an active way of keeping their minds functioning. They can do activities, they can do crossword puzzles, they can read magazines. But we have no way of doing that.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mayor, we have no more callers.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
I would just like to, if Teresa is still listening or if she can hear my voice, we have a lot of organizations in our city that would probably love to take on a project like this, like Kiwanis and Rotary. And, you know, of course, we have like four rotaries and this seems like a, a very important ask. And I would encourage her to get in touch with those, those organizations and perhaps if she contacts the city, we could, staff could give her some numbers and names of people that she can contact and, and perhaps this can be made possible. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
So what's next, Ms. Ajemi?
Next would be action items. Eight A would be city attorney regarding consideration of extension or amendment of emergency public orders related to the residential eviction moratorium, the rent increase freeze and face coverings requirement related to COVID-nineteen state of emergency. Eight A one, resolution extending an emergency public order relating to the moratorium on residential evictions. Two, resolution extending an emergency public order relating to the freeze on residential rent increases. Three, resolution extending an emergency public order pertaining to face coverings.
Mr. City Attorney Garcia?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as Mr. Ajemi just ran to the record, the three items are the existing emergency orders related to residential evictions, rent increases, there are the rent increase freeze and the face masks or face coverings order, which are all set to expire on August thirty-first. With respect to the face coverings, in addition to the previous report you received from the chief, that can be extended, you know, beyond August thirty-first and obviously it's, it's recommended that you do so. With respect to the, the rent eviction moratorium, a couple of things that we noted in the report. First, the state legis, the community, the California Judicial Council, which had previously issued a, its own moratorium on evictions that was to last through ninety days after the governor declared the emergency over. The CJC took action last week to sunset that order, so now as of September first, landlords will be able to, in jurisdictions that do not have a residential eviction moratorium, will be able to proceed with unlawful detainer proceedings for non-payment of rent starting September first. In addition, as we noted in the report, the California legislature, as a result of that CJC order, is considering, strongly considering legislation that would impose a statewide residential eviction moratorium through either April of twenty-twenty-one or the end of the emergency, statewide emergency, whichever occurs first. That bill also includes, which is AB fourteen thirty-six, also includes mortgage forbearance provisions for non-corporate landlords as well as the owners of single-family homes and I can, I can discuss that if council wishes. The statewide eviction legislation would essentially allow or impose a moratorium for any, any tenant who can attest to having a COVID-related basis for not being able to pay his or her rent for a particular period of time. So that's, that's kind of one area that it deviates from, from our current order. And then finally note, as we noted in the report, the county is currently considering or has stated that they'll be considering a countywide eviction moratorium that would apply in any jurisdiction as a floor regardless of that particular city's own residential eviction moratorium, as we've explained previously and also in this report. We, we believe that conflicts with their authority under the emergency services statutes. And we, we think it'll create some confusion when you have, if you have differing provisions of a local city moratorium that differs from the county moratorium. But that, and we've, we've reached out to the county to explain our position along with the city attorneys of Pasadena and Burbank. So with that, if the county, if the city council desires to extend the residential eviction moratorium, it could do so for another thirty days. I, I also noted in the report that the governor's order allowing local agencies to impose eviction moratorium currently is set to expire on September thirtieth. So this will, if you extend it to September thirtieth, it would line up with that. And as I mentioned previously, I think in briefings, the governor has stated that he may consider additional amendments to that order if the legislature and the governor are unable to come to some resolution of AB fourteen thirty-six. And then just the last note, the, the written report mentions SB fourteen-ten, which would have provided tax credits to landlords who've lost rental income due to COVID-nineteen. That bill, after the, the publishing of this report, was shelved for the remainder of the legislative session, so it will not be part of the legislative package for this year. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions. And then obviously with the, the last item is the residential rent increase freeze, the council can extend that if it, if it desires. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Garcia, repeat, what's the, what's the regulation by the state as far as rent freeze?
Sure.
I mean.
Evictions?
Eviction.
So the, the couple of, a couple of state bodies, the California Judicial Council, their order will expire on September first?
Right.
The state legislature's bill, is that, that's what you're talking about?
Yes.
That would allow a, a tenant, that would impose an eviction moratorium for any tenant who can establish, can atta, I shouldn't even say establish, who can attest to having a COVID-related reason for not being able to pay their rent for a particular month? It would require the tenants, it would give the tenants from twelve months to repay that rent. It would, for any rent that's not paid between March fourth of this year to April of next year of twenty-twenty-one, the landlords could start to seek repayment of that commencing on, on April of twenty-twenty-one, but would not be able to evict tenants for non-payment of that rent. It would only be able to recoup that through civil proceedings. And then come April tw, April twenty-twenty-one, landlords would be able to commence the regular process of invoking eviction proceedings for non-payment of rent. So it's twelve, it's twelve-month repayment, it's, the moratorium's in effect till April of twenty-twenty-one or the end of the emergency, whichever comes first, and I think it's anticipated it'll be April twenty-twenty-one. And then that, that repayment does not, for the period that they didn't pay, that will not trigger eviction on its face.
Thank you. Anybody, councilmembers, my colleagues, they want to comment on this item? Item eight A?
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Garcia.
Mayor, we, we do have three callers on the line.
Okay, we go to the callers and we come back.
Steven, you're live, Steven? Steven? Steven, can you hear me?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Steven.
Thank you, sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Agajani and members of the city council. This is Steven Small, twenty-twenty president of the Glendale Association of Realtors. On behalf of our membership, we urge you to continue your measured, thoughtful and fair approach to the eviction moratorium and freeze on rent increases by extending both another thirty days. Failure to extend these resolutions will possibly result in L.A. County takeover or loss pertinent to our city's tenants and housing providers as well as commercial property owners and the businesses they lease to. This would negate all the hard work you have done over the past month in fashioning a balanced answer to our current COVID crisis. In addition, legislation by the state will be decided by the end of the month, perhaps given a statewide longer-term solution. We have been proud of the council's understanding of both sides of the rent crisis and of the answers you have provided. Please continue that fair approach, give it another thirty days and we'll see where we are at that time. Thank you for consideration and leadership. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you for your, your leadership also. Thank you very much. Is there any other call?
Mayor, you're live, Mary? Mary, can you hear me?
Hello, good evening, Mayor and city councilmembers. I would like to urge the city council to extend the rent freeze for twelve months as the city of L.A. has done and other conscientious cities. Majority of renters are rent burdened with sixty, six hundred and fifty percent rent increase over the past few years. And that rent increase of seven percent is too much at a time of such economic crisis. No one is making a profit at a time like this and neither should the landlords. The exorbitant rent increase over the past few years has put an unimaginable burden on tenants where they have to put majority of their income towards rent. And over the past few months, I've heard like some condescending comments that, by landlords and others, that landlords acquire their property to hard work, making the condescending implication that tenants are not hardworking. Let me make a correction, it is the hardworking tenants who are paying the mortgages of the landlords. And even though they have unjustifiably increased rent over the past few years, and, I mean, even though they think it's okay to unjustifiably overcharge and acquire the majority of the tenant's income, and what is taking place is inhumane. And according to the statistics, over ninety percent of tenants have paid the rent over the past few months. And even though the landlords have the option to extend their, to have mortgage forbearance for twelve months and also they got ten thousand free grants and other loans through SSB. And there are a lot of help for landlords, but not for tenants. So majority of tenants are paying the rent at a time like this, but they cannot afford the rent increase at a time like this. I urge the city councilmembers to represent the residents of Glendale who are suffering and who have having time to pay towards their print, most of their income and to look into your conscience as other cities have done and extend the rent freeze for one year or at least six months because it's really difficult times at this moment and there should not even be rent increases. Even the seven percent over the already increased rent is just too much for tenants. We are already struggling to accommodate for all the, all the other costs. So I urge the city to extend the rent freeze for six months or longer, twelve months like the city of L.A. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Next one?
Karen, you're live, Karen?
Hi, I sent an email to Mr. Ajemi earlier this afternoon if you could display it for me, please. Yes, I got this remarkable email from my landlord last week that they're actually reducing my rent by eighty dollars beginning September first. And this is actually because they've been tracking COVID. My response to her was exactly what I'm going to tell you, is that, yes, I noticed that my zip code is in the list of L.A. County's areas with the highest risk of evictions. I have heard of several landlords who are actually trying to increase rent during this pandemic, so this is welcome news and my neighbor would be pleased to hear the news as well. I say this because in case landlords are confused about the rent freeze, no one is preventing them from actually lowering rent. They're completely free to lower rent as much as they want. This would be a textbook example of enlightened self-interest, but since most landlords are not doing this, I would suggest that they open a textbook one to know all. Actually, in my experience, I've had several landlords do this, completely voluntarily, actually offer me more services in return for my rent or reduce my rent even before I asked for it. But my experience is apparently unique. After consulting my friends and fellow tenants, absolutely no one has ever, ever, ever had a landlord actually decrease the rent in an apartment that they're currently occupying. Price moves down tend to happen in between tenant fees. But in this case, if we wait for that to happen, these people are going to become homeless. I do want to thank the council for their decision earlier this afternoon to extend aid to homeowners who have been hurt by COVID. But I should point out that this affected exactly one homeowner in Glendale, one of ninety-seven. It's clear that homeowners in Glendale are in no danger of becoming homeless. The people who are at greatest risk of becoming homeless during this pandemic are the thousands and thousands of renters who apply for aid and will not get it. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Leo, you're live, Leo?
Yes, good evening, everybody. My concern is strictly about the moratorium extension. I'm a landlord, not, haven't, haven't been that long, so I'm new in this business. I'm a local dentist, actually. So you know, some people sound like they're sorry for the war, they're in la-la-la. Okay, why? Because my particular tenant, I never increase the rent and I don't care about the rent, you know? I always, I, I ask them, specifically the ones that have little children, if they don't want to pay the rent, okay, do it, so don't pay it till you're okay? And, and most of them, they said, okay, they're okay. But there's one particular tenant sitting there collecting the government money, specifically federal ADD that everybody gets, lives luxury life and takes full advantage of all the system not to pay the rent. Just his car, car, not car, car's expenses are more than my rent. You know? And this is, it's ridiculous, it's discouraging, you know? This is not socialism. You know, I worked very hard to get to that point, to get that money to cover my own expenses. In the same time, this particular patient, person is demanding all the repairs and all the maintenances to the highest level. So we have to, this is a difficult situation, we're trying to help each other, but don't make mistakes. There are people take full advantage of all this. They're opportunistic people, just waited for this and they did it just at the gap room. And, and you said, okay, prove of, not income of being convicted by, by COVID. What's the proof is that? They can have six different bank accounts, okay? They can have six different businesses and they can prove anything they want, there's no such thing as proof. You should take this into consideration too, and this is not only about my tenant, I speak with people whenever I have time and a lot of, lot of landlords are hurting right now. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, thank you. My councilmembers, my colleagues, they want to comment on this item eight A or we just extending?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Najarian?
And this was, I'll save my comments for later, but in particular this question, which was raised by Mr. Small. And I'd like to direct this to the city attorney. If we were to not extend our eviction moratorium, would that make us more susceptible to the jurisdiction of L.A. County's moratorium?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Najarian, I don't, the current moratorium language in L.A. County's moratorium says that for any, it applies in any jurisdiction that does not have its own moratorium. And what the county is proposing is to, the new language would say it applies as a floor And what the county is proposing is to, the new language would say it applies as a floor, so any cities couldn't drop below. We, you know, our, our opinion is, in both cases, this county does not have that authority to oppose a rent control or a rent eviction order in an incorporated city. So I don't know that it makes it more, but to the point that it certainly, there will certainly be gray areas that will be litigated in the future, depending on, on how, how the county acts in the near, in the near future. Does that answer your question?
I, I guess it does. In my opinion, where you said that it would apply to any municipality that does not have a moratorium, I think if we were not to have a moratorium, that would certainly leave us open for the imposition of the county ordinance, which I'm very much against. I'm very much in favor of local control, that means us, the City of Glendale, controlling what we're going to be doing. I don't want to be caught in that trap, so I think we need to watch out for that particular Let me just jump in then. I'm, I'm okay with continuing the mask order. I'm okay with the rent freeze. I'm, you know, very grudgingly okay with the extending the moratorium for another 30 days. My, my problem is that so far, there hasn't been any relief for the housing providers. And it's been maybe six months that some of them have been providing housing without any payment, not by every tenant, but by a few. And a few out of, let's say, a six or eight unit building is going to, and not only will they not make a profit, but they're going to start falling behind on their mortgage payments. I understand that the state is in, has sort of shifted gears, and they're in a much more aggressive negotiation point, where they are trying to be more equitable to the housing providers, as well as the renters. Whether that's going to be reviving the AB 1410 tax credits, or any other way of recompensating the housing providers for their loss. And I hope that happens. I heard that was going to be coming very soon. And part of, part of me says, let the state jump in and, and take care of this, because they're the ones that really started imposing these. But in any event, this is before us, so grudgingly, I'll, I'll go for an extra 30-day for the eviction moratorium, for the masks, for the, not grudgingly for the masks, happily for the masks, but also the rent freeze. And I think those were the, the main issues before us.
So you are in favor of all three items here, one, two, and three? What has been written in here in our 8--
Yes.
Item 8A?
Yes, Mr.--
Okay. Is there a second? If there is no other comment, I want to move this item forward. Is there a second? Ms. Devine?
I will second the item.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Well, hold on, if I could just make sure we have clear, it was a motion to approve all three resolutions by, for 30-day extensions with, by Mr. Najarian, and seconded by Ms. Devine.
Yes, that was my motion.
Yes.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gisakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Mr. Najarian? Okay.
And Mayor Agajani?
Yes. What's next, Mr. Agajani?
Next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items, not part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, I do have a caller.
Yes, please, let's go to the caller, please.
Azneev, go ahead, Azneev?
Hi, I want to say that the landlords are much more interested in more profits than just renting the apartments. If the apartments are staying empty, and who is going to pay the rent for them? It's not, they are losing money that time, so it's not that my problem. My problem is Mr. Najarian, who was saying that the landlords are not getting any help, they are getting so much help that in the paper, LA Times has written today also, I read many things, 91% of the tenants are paying their rent. Only a few are who are affected by COVID-19, so they are the people who are not paying the rent. And they, and there are help, they are getting tax, tax help, they are, banks are helping, whatever you want, many kinds, they know much better. He's a lawyer, and he shouldn't be excusing himself from these conversations because he's a landlord. I don't understand that. Please, Mr. Garcia, can you explain that to us? Because I'm always thinking that why he is doing so much remark, because only he is the person that is against the tenants. And I, I don't understand why the rent increased, why the profit, extra profit means, I don't understand, at this time, when they are paying their rent. And some people are, in the paper, it's written that there is a rent decrease. Why is the rent decreased when there is a rent increase? I don't understand this. Why they have to increase the rent? Why? Everybody is in trouble, everybody is in problem. So why? Can you take a good decision and decide not to increase the rent, so that you will freeze it for at least a year? Thank you so much. We have selected you, so we have elected you, so that you will protect the people of Glendale, not the landlords. The landlords are already protected. They have, instead of, when they started to buy apartments, they had one, then it became two, the same landlord, I mean, five, six, 10, imagine. So because of who? Because of the tenants who are paying every month extra money to them. So the rents have been so high, it has never been like this before. This is something crazy. You should take care to you, to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Seda, you're live, Seda?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm calling, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Seda Barzegar. I would like to talk to you regarding an off-the-agenda issue. We have had, during the last three, four months, problems with attacking bees. And we have reported this to the City of Glendale. I heard that the city is considering passing a proposal to allow beekeeping in residential areas. And everybody at the city has told us to communicate and tell you about all of our issues. I'm a 36-year resident of Glendale, and I have been in the same address for 22 years now. And our south neighbor is, has and is keeping bees. This started long ago, 10 years ago, when our north side neighbor came to us to look for a source of bees and beehives in our property. And they found that it was our south neighbor that had a beehive, and it was just by nature had been, the bees had set hives in their property under the roof. And after that, we've heard that the north neighbors' children playing, screaming, bees, bees, and when they are playing in the yard, they are attacked by the bees like we were. Two years ago, the south side neighbors had a gazebo that had a very expensive bed of flowers, and presumably, this was what provided nectar for the bees, and they, they collected there. Two years ago, this gazebo dilapidated and collapsed, and everything was cleared, only concrete floor was left. And it was then that we noticed that there are wooden boxes there were under the gazebo that are now visible, and that the neighbors are tending to these boxes, wearing full gear of beekeeping, hat and face net and overalls. During the COVID-19 lockdown, I started gardening and tending to our rose bushes. On several occasions, I had a group of bees hovering over my head and getting into my hair. My brother came to my rescue and got away, got me away, and we went inside the house. And after several occasions of these problems, I totally gave up gardening, because I could not afford, I am allergic, and I cannot afford to be stung. The next incidence was that our worker was working in the yard, and he didn't give up as easily as I did. He got stung in the forehead. I became very concerned and filed a complaint with City of Glendale, and I heard comments like, so what? One bee here and there doesn't make any difference, or what could that do to you? So I'm trying to paint, paint a Sunday, day, spending a Sunday in our yard for you. When we get out, we have built a small pool to enjoy during the hot time. We get into the pool, there's bees in the pool, there's bees around the pool, there are bees on the towels that we set to lie down, there are bees on our table, on our tablecloths, and forget about turning on the lights at night, because in five minutes, the bees coming groups hovering over the lights. And one day, I went close to take a video to send to the city, so they would know what we are suffering, but the bees dropped on my clothing and my shoes and feet, and I just ran inside, and I gave up bees staying out, so we avoid turning on the lights at night. Then we came into the kitchen, we turned on the lights, and there are bees hovering in our kitchen. I went to my bedroom, I turned the lights on one night at 10 o'clock, and there's bees hovering in my, in my bedroom. One morning, 3 to 4 o'clock in the morning, I was awakened by a sound that sounded like hovering bees. And sure enough, I got up, turned on the light, there's a bee in my bedroom. So they have been attacking and giving us very, very inconvenient things, and we are afraid, we are afraid in our own property to go out, to turn the lights on, to be in our bedroom. We don't know if, if a bee is going to attack us or not. So as a person who has lived through a incidence of keeping bees right next door, I want to make you aware of what's going on.
Ms. Barzegar. You can call back next week.
Am I over the time?
Thank you for calling. You are, we passed five minutes, and you may call again next week.
Mayor?
I thank you for your attention and time at this late hour of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, before, one second, Ms. Devine. I have a question for our city attorney. Maybe you can answer it next week. What's the rule and regulation? Because I had a few people called me about this bees issues. So if you, one, you can tell me about it next week or now, what's the rules and regulation about bees?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think that, and Mr. Landau probably add, the issue is, as, as previous speaker spoke to this issue, is about the zones that the, the use is allowed in. It's only allowed, I think, in one of the residential zones and not multiple, and that's the issue raised by the speaker.
Actually, it's only in the special recreation zone, beekeeping is allowed. It is not allowed in the, in the single-family zones, the residential zones. The council asked us to look into that, and that's in fact what we'll do. I believe that item is scheduled to come back November the 3rd.
So this will come back November the 3rd?
For discussion.
Okay. Ms. Devine?
Yes, thank, thank you. And what I'd like is to get the address for, that Seda is talking about, so that we can send inspectors or someone out there to see what's going on. I know that they, they have to be registered beekeepers, they have to be certified, and if these people are not, then there may be a way of, of helping her out with this problem. So maybe we can get her address and, and send, send someone out.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, we'll get the callers--
Okay, Mr. Golani? Yes?
We'll take the caller's ad, address offline, staff will do that.
Okay. So caller, I hope, okay, then we will get in touch with the caller. Okay, Ms. Barzegar, so be in touch with city, so let's see what we can do. Did you mention there are certain areas that they can keep the bees or hives?
The special recreation zone--
Recreation?
Recreation. Typically, that's property that we own, open space. We have a staff member that actually administers that for us, believe through parks, community services and parks. And as I, again, as I understand, from the beekeeper that is just adjacent to--
Barzegar, Ms. Barzegar?
Barzegar. They were full, and they didn't have anywhere to take their hives. So that's why they had asked to be able to keep them at their home, in their backyard.
Oh, thank you. Is there any comment or question from my colleagues? Okay.
If there's no other calls, Mr. Mayor, I just want to address the accusation by Azneev.
Okay.
That lady, the caller named--
She's a member of Najarian.
Yeah, the caller named Azneev obviously is upset that I'm trying to look at both sides of this issue regarding rentals and home, providing homes. I do not own any rental properties in the City of Glendale. Last year, or two years ago, when we had our rent control discussion, I did have properties. I did not participate in that, but I sold my properties. In fact, I had to sell them and could not, I had to wait a year after selling my interests before discussing it, and it's not clear, even if I did have properties, whether I would or would not be able to participate in a discussion on eviction moratorium. But anyway, that question is moot, because I do not have it. And I do like to try and look at both sides of every issue, Azneev, so. I'm sorry that makes you upset.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Okay, what's next?
Any new business?
No more?
Adjournment.
Adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. With that said, the meeting is adjourned at 7:30 PM. We have a record tonight.